Welcome, everybody. I call this meeting to order. Richfield City Council Meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. We are honored tonight to have some very special guests for our very first agenda item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Arrow of Light Dunn Richfield Cub Scout Pack, three-three-eight-four. And we were excited to have a great community conversation with you earlier about what you all can do to make this world a better place. So, thank you for having that that conversation with us, and thank you for leading us in the pledge. So, if you all are able, please stand and join us in the pledge that will be led by our Cub Scouts. Thank you very much. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session of December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, the regular City Council Meeting of December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, and the special City Council Meeting of December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is a consent calendar, and that goes to Katie, City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further action is council action is necessary on these items. Item A, consider a resolution granting an amendment to approve to approved development plans at Cedar Point Commons requesting approval of a standalone trash enclosure for the retail building at eighteen forty sixty-sixth Street East. Item B, consider approval of the first reading of ordinance rezoning property at sixty-five-oh-one Wood Lake Drive, Market Plaza, and Village Shores as a planned use, and schedule a second reading for January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. Item C, consider approval of an agreement with the City of Bloomington for the provision of health services for the City of Richfield for two thousand and twenty. Item D, consider approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Blessed Trinity Catholic School located at Church of Saint Richard, seventy-five forty Penn Avenue South for their two thousand and twenty snowball dance taking place February eighth, two thousand and twenty. Item E, consider approval to designate an acting city manager for two thousand and twenty. Item F, consider the resolution designating official depositories for the City of Richfield for two thousand and twenty, including the approval of collateral. Item G, consider a resolution authorizing the use of credit cards by city employees otherwise authorized to make purchases on behalf of the city. Item H, consider a resolution designating an official newspaper for two thousand and twenty. I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you, City Manager, and I just want to note that I I would like to go back and approve the agenda, that I did not do that. So, before we continue with the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve, we move, uh, we approve the agenda, I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. Thank you. Now, going back to the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been approved. Thank you very much. The next item is goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, this item is to consider the appointment of youth members to city advisory boards and commissions. Uh, we had a chance to interview four youth who are applying and are excited to consider appointing all four of them. It was exciting to to hear their passions, and I'm excited to work with them. I said excited a lot, but that's how I feel about it, so. Um, with that, I will move that we approve the appointment of persons to fill vacant youth terms on the city advisory board and commissions.
Second.
Any council discussion on this item? I'd just like to briefly say this is the item that we talked to you about earlier, to the youth, um, to the scout pack, about how you can get involved in our boards and commissions. Um, we do have slots open, um, but right now you guys are too young, so feel free to please visit our boards and commissions and learn more about them, and then when you're fifteen, you can apply to become a voting member. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? All right, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
This is a motion to consider a resolution approving the contract for the police officers and detectives, E.L., or excuse me, L.E.L.S., Local One-Two-Three, for con- the contracting period of January one, two thousand and twenty, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and authorize the city manager to execute that agreement. So, I would move we adopt a resolution approving the provision of the two thousand and twenty to twenty-one labor agreement with the police officers and detectives, L.E.L.S., Local One-Two-Three, uh, bargaining unit, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. The next item will go to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving the contract with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Twelve-Fifteen, for the contract period, January the first, two thousand and twenty, through December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement. So, I will move that motion. That resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved. Council item, council item number seven is the consideration of a designation of a mayor pro temp for two thousand and twenty. The city charter states it is necessary to designate a city council member to serve as the mayor pro temp for those times when the mayor is absent from the city. Councilmember Edwina Garcia served as the mayor pro temp in two thousand and nineteen. Thank you very much for your time, Councilmember Garcia, for for doing that.
Thank you for the honor.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the resolution?
We have.
Or the designation?
Said anybody yet, have you?
Oh, no, I have not, you're right. Sorry about that. Um, so, for this year, for two thousand and twenty, I would like to designate Councilmember Simon Troutman as the mayor pro temp. Sorry about that, and I would like to make the motion to designate Councilmember Troutman as the mayor pro temp.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any council discussion on the item?
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilmember Garcia, for serving, and thank you, Councilmember Troutman, for filling in. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has been approved. The next item is the consideration of representatives to serve as the two thousand and twenty liaisons to various local, regional, and state organizations, city board, and commissions. Members of the city council serve as the city representatives on various local, regional, and state organizations, the city and city boards and commissions. Each year, the city council appoints these representatives. I would like to make a motion to designate the following list of for council liaison appointments to our various le- uh, local, regional, state organizations and city boards and commissions. The Metro Cities, um, monthly meetings, the liaison will be Councilmember Troutman with alternate Mayor Regan Gonzalez. League of Minnesota Cities, the liaison will be Councilmember Wayland with alternate Councilmember Troutman. The representative on the noise oversight committee is Pam Demetranko, Assistant City Manager for the representative, and Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the alternate. I thirty-five Solutions Alliance will have Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the representative, Councilmember Garcia as the alternate, and Joe Powers as the staff liaison. Four ninety-four Corridor Commission for two thousand and twenty will have Councilmember Troutman as the representative, and Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the alternate, Jack Bros as the staff liaison. School District Liaison will be Mayor Regan Gonzalez, and the alternate will be Councilmember Supple. The Fowl Board will have Councilmember Troutman as the liaison, and Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the alternate. The Southwest Cable Commission will have Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the representative, city manager Katie Rodriguez as the representative, and Councilmember Garcia as the alternate. Richfield Planning Human, or Community Human Services Planning Council will have Councilmember Garcia as the representative, and Councilmember Supple as the alternate. The Advisory Board of Health will have Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the liaison, and Councilmember Garcia as the alternate. Arts Commission will have Councilmember Supple as the liaison, and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. The Civil Service Commission will have Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the liaison, and Kelly Nguyen as the staff liaison. The Community Services Commission will have Councilmember Garcia as the liaison, and Councilmember Supple as the alternate. The Friendship City Commission will have Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the liaison, and Councilmember Garcia as the alternate. The Human Rights Commission will have Councilmember Supple as the liaison, and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. The Planning Commission will have Councilmember Wayland as the liaison, and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. The Transportation Commission will have Councilmember Troutman as the liaison, Councilmember Supple as the alternate. The Sustainability Commission will have Councilmember Wayland as the liaison, Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. The Richfield Historical Society will have Councilmember Garcia as the representative, Councilmember Supple as the alternate, and beyond, the Yellow Ribbon Committee will have Mayor Regan Gonzalez as the representative, and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. Um, so again, I would like to make the motion to designate the list that I just read as the council liaison appointments to our various local, regional, and state organizations and city boards and commissions.
Second.
All right, is there any council member discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. For this item, we'll consider the acceptance of bid minutes and tabulation dated January seventh of two thousand and twenty, the award of contract to Commercial Refrigeration Systems, who is the lowest bidder, in the amount of two million eight hundred and forty-nine-thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, minus an eight percent contingency during construction, and finally, the authorization of staff to execute the contract for the Richfield Ice Arena Refrigeration Project managed by B thirty-two Engineering Group. Um, and so, I will briefly say that, um, we've, we've had this conversation a couple times, but the the Richfield Ice Arena, uh, is is in need of an upgrade due to the chemicals we've been using, and so there was some extensive community outreach, um, this past year, and, um, I think this is the the final step to get ready to go, so if that, I'll pass it over to staff, and if you have anything to report.
Yes, so the project went out to bid, and we had three companies put in a quote for the project. Uh, we were originally quoted three point four million dollars for, uh, the actual refrigeration work, so we were happy to see a bid come in at two point eight million dollars, and that will allow us to do other parts of the upgrade in the in the package, which would include, um, an upgraded HVAC system, ADA upgrades, particularly to rink one in the bathrooms, uh, purchase of artificial terp, so we'll be able to have dry floor events and open up the arena other parts of the year when, uh, we don't have skating and have trade shows and things like that, and then also some roof improvements. So, looking at the the budget that we have, we should be able to do the whole package of upgrades. Uh, the work would start probably late March, and we would be done mid-September. We'll be able to keep one sheet of ice open through the majority of the project, but there will be a two-month period where both sheets will have to be down to make the official switch over to that new refrigeration system. And the new refrigeration system will be ammonia-based versus our twenty-two base.
All right, thank you. Uh, with that, I will make a motion to accept the bid minutes and tabulation from January seventh of two thousand and twenty to award the contract to Commercial Refrigeration Systems, uh, in the amount of two million eight hundred forty-nine-thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, minus the recommended eight percent contingency, and authorize staff to execute this contract for the Richfield Ice Arena Refrigeration Project managed by B thirty-two Engineering Group.
Second.
Any council comments?
Yes, I wanted to say, I I think this this has been on the table for, I don't know, for years, and it's something that has required not a lot of time, creativity, effort, but also, you know, you're, um, in terms of, um, raising money, and that has come under, you know, Amy Markle and Chris Wild, Willby, what did you say?
Wybe.
Wybe, I'm sorry. And Chris and Amy have done a tremendous job in working together, and, uh, and really, um, you know, doing this right, because when you do it right, you know, you you can, you can maintain, um, a very integral part of our, um, recreation area, and, um, and there's no, I mean, for us to sit here and just say, you know, we're we're okay in this, and not acknowledging the fact that you have really worked very, very hard and have, uh, toiled over this for for a long time, we appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely, thank you so much, Councilmember Garcia, for sharing, um, the praise of our staff and and the hard work, um, to help make this happen and bring our ice arena into the future, and it was great to see how our staff brought, um, so much community engagement to the process, and our residents also really got involved and helped inform that, and I'm really looking forward to the next phase of our ice arena and how that can help bring our community together, and also provide new opportunities for our residents, and to help us continue, um, to find ways to attract people from the region, and even across the country, and even other countries, to Richfield, um, with this excellent and great opportunity. So, thank you to staff and all the community members involved in the process. Councilmember Troutman.
I just wanted to to add a couple of thank yous to Chris Wybe and Amy Markle and our city manager and all our staff for pushing this project forward, and, um, I know we read it in the executive summary, but, um, the the necessity of this project was was forced on us because we could no longer provide the coolant that we had before, but it's not just an opportunity to be more environmentally sound, it's an opportunity for our community to now have different men, uh, different different kinds of events in that space, which I think is is really important and timely, and I know a lot of people advocated for that, and I'm really grateful for that, and it's also, I really just want to highlight and lift up that it'll now be, um, ADA accessible, uh, in one of our rinks, which is great, because that makes it a a place for our commu- for more of our community members where it hasn't always been, and so, so that's, that's a big deal, too, and we're looking forward to that, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the, uh, resolution, or excuse me, the motion has been approved. Thank you very much. The next item is the city manager's report.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, the next item is claims and payroll, and that always goes to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have always appreciated that, because this is a very important part of of city business, so I will move claims and payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll has been approved, thank you very much. The next item is our open forum, um, and I just want to ask staff, are there other cards for the open forum? I think we were collecting some cards. So, again, just to remind everybody, um, welcome, we are very excited, everybody is here tonight, and we, um, are now going into our open forum where residents who would like to share, um, and speak to to comments or issues that are not on the council's agenda can come and speak to the city council. This is not a back-and-forth or open dialogue, it really is an opportunity for residents and folks from the community to come tonight, um, speak, and our council will be listening. We're glad everybody is here, and again, um, we ask folks to please try to keep their comments to three minutes, and if you could please state your name and your address when you come up, um, that would also be greatly appreciated, so I will call folks up as, um, I call up the cards that I have received. So, the first, uh, person here for the open forum is Brian Millard. If you would please, um, come up to the microphone for your comments.
Um, yeah, my name is Brian Millard, and I don't live in Richfield, I live in South Minneapolis, but I do all my business in Richfield. Um, and I'm here tonight to talk about Brian Quinones and what how the situation is being handled with the police officers who, um, killed him in September. Um, the investigation is still open, and I'm mainly here to, um, support the family. Um, and honestly, I've done a lot of talking lately, and emails, and with you, Mayor Gonzalez, whether it's you or one of your staff members on Facebook. So, I guess what I'm here to say is it makes no sense and is reckless that police officers who are still under investigation are back on the streets already. Where's the accountability for the officers? Um, any respectable business, um, place of work, if an employee is under investigation for some misconduct in the workplace, they're asked to leave that situation, go home until the investigation is over. I think that's very reasonable to ask. I don't care if they're suspended with pay, I don't care if they're put behind a desk, but they just need to be off the streets, out of the public, until we know what they did was appropriate or inappropriate. And to be honest, that's all I have to say. Um, my wife and I do business here, we will consider doing business elsewhere unless there's actions taken to, um, to bring justice to the family, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millard. The next person I have is Kimberly Millard, if you could please come up to the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Millard. I live in South Minneapolis with my husband, who just spoke, and, um, sorry, I'm, I'm trying to pull up a screenshot, fail, something on my desk. Um, regarding the death of, the killing, really, of Brian Quinones, um, I'm thinking about the fact that it's been close to five months with no accountability, with no response from the city to the data requests that have come in, um, from concerned community and family members. And I like to look at what the principles are that cities and police departments at least say on paper that they're abiding by, and so I was looking at the Richfield Police Departments, and on the website it says, "It is the mission of the Richfield Police Department to safeguard the lives and property of the people we serve, to reduce the incidence and fear of crime, and to enhance public safety while working with the community to improve their quality of life." Um, I know there's not going to be back and forth with the council, because y'all are here to listen, not to talk. Um, so, Ashley, do you feel that you and Cameron's lives have been safeguarded by the Richfield Police? Yes, and Char lives here, too. Do you feel that they have reduced the incidence and fear of crime in Richfield? Have they enhanced public safety by killing Brian? Has your quality of life been improved? So, I guess I just want to know, and I wish the police, I wish the police chief was here to answer this. I really, I I I'm sincere here, like, I'm not, I'm supposed to be somewhere else tonight. I I don't like skipping one obligation to to come talk to you guys, because justice has not been served, and you've been dragging things on for months. I'm mad that I have to be here. But you guys say that these are your principles that you abide by, and I know that Ashley has seen the video of what happened, and I know that there's a reason it has not been released to the public, because I know that you guys know that there would be an uproar if the general public saw what really happened. We know that's why you're keeping it, and how long did the Chicago Police Department cover up the killing of Laquan McDonald? We're not going to stop. What has been done in the darkness is going to be brought into the light, and I hope you guys consider that. And we want the officers who killed Brian off of the streets. I do not feel safe knowing that they are on the loose. Char got pulled over by one of them recently, or had to interact with them. Yeah, okay, so, there's no reason for the, I mean, you know, and even, let's, let's take away the whole, was it justified, was it not justified, under the, under the law, which is excuses way too much, let's take that away. When somebody kills another person, whether they meant to, whether they didn't mean to, whether it was justified or not, that changes them. It it cha- it has to change them on a deep psychological level, and so we should all be uncomfortable with police officers who have killed members of the community being back on the streets and engaging with the public. So, I want, I want them taken off of the streets, I would like them to be fired. I know that if that happens, it's not going to matter because of the way the arbitration system works and the way cops routinely get their jobs back after misconduct and all of that, but I want you to consider, do you want somebody who has taken another human life interacting with a gun with members of the public that you guys claim you want to enhance their sense of safety for? That's all I got.
Thank you very much, Ms. Millard. The next person I would like to invite up is Will Murray Quinones.
My name is Will Murray Quinones, sister of Brian Quinones, the one that was killed. Here, you guys are aware, but we're not aware, and that's why I'm here. You guys have information that we don't have, you guys aren't helping us be aware, you guys aren't helping us. Get anywhere, there could be a case, or there is a case, and we don't have any information from you guys. I didn't want to get nervous, but I am. I don't want to do this every other week, every week. You guys were supposed to release a video to us, along with Edina. Edina didn't hide anything from us, I just want to know what you guys are hiding. We want to see these videos, we want the police off of the street. I don't want to encounter them, not with my son. Not being a city council member, how would you feel, put yourself in my shoes? How am I going to react if I ran into one of them? I don't want to, I avoid the city of Richfield, and I have family here. I don't come see them, they won't see me, unless they come out to see me. Just put yourself in our shoes as a person, not as a city council member, is all I'm asking for, and that's all I came here to say. You guys are aware, and just help us be aware, too.
Thank you, Ms. Quinones. The next person I would like to invite up is Dawn William. The next person I would like to invite up is Don William.
Bless the MC. My name's Don Williams. I live in Minnesota. Brian Quinones is my grandson. September 7th, our lives changed. You've never been through this, and I hope you never do. I hope you people never have to go through this. A life changer, in a lot of ways. Couple days after Brian was shot and killed in what's called homicide, one of your board members got ahold of me in Messenger, wanted to reach out and make contact. Talked to my pastor and found out exactly who I was. Asked if City Council could come to Brian's visitation. And Ashley and I talked, and concession was made so long as you didn't make a political statement or come with an agenda. So three of you came and sat in the back at Brian's visitation. And I've had a long time to reflect and think back. And given your actions since that time, you didn't give a shit as a political action for you by coming and sitting there. We support the family. Since that time, you've done nothing in your power to support this family despite numerous requests for data, despite requests for guidance on who to reach out to because no one, no one in Richfield has reached out to this fam. Thanks for that. Actually, I could do without all of you. People will come up here today and they'll talk about police. I won't. Police are led by someone. Police are paid by someone. Matter of fact, didn't we just have to talk about contract? You guys are good, huh? You got paid. My grandson ain't with me, but y'all are going to get paid and taken care of. For those people that pay and do contract approvals and don't reach out and make false promises and don't keep promises and back out at the last minute on agreements, you shouldn't be here. That's what I'm here for. That's what I'm here to request. Richfield, the citizens of Richfield, you need people that will represent you with your interests and all of your interests at heart. You need compassionate board members who will actually care for all of the citizens of Richfield and not just perform their mundane tasks. I feel used by this system. I look at my granddaughter and my great-grandson, and I look at what they've gone through. And just honesty, just some kind of transparency from one of you people might have made a difference. But you're worthless. This board is worthless to me because you've lied in the past, and you're not transparent, and you don't tell the truth, and you don't follow up with what you say you're going to give. You're politicians. I don't have much faith in politicians. And you're the reason why. Because you're local level. You have a chance. National level politicians aren't going to jump on this wagon. Anybody has the ability to make it different, to make a stand and do what you should do, is you guys. Because it can go from you, and it can go to the legislature, and you can push, and you can help support change. Justice delayed is justice denied. And you are doing your damnedest to deny my grandson the proper justice. I don't want to come back here every two weeks either. But you know what? I love that kid. And I'm going to do whatever it takes. So if I got to be here every two weeks to remind you how inept and how callous you are to some of your citizens, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. I might take out an ad and let everybody in Richfield know how inept you are and how you don't care about every citizen in this city. I have rights. Brian had rights. And you blew those away on September 7th. You shouldn't have anything. You shouldn't have anything. Hope you had a good holiday. Our suck.
Thank you, Mr. William. The next person I would like to invite is Shara Blanque.
Maria, my last name is pronounced Blanch, which you should know by now. How many years have I known you? I'm going to play a song for you guys. This is a song that Brian wrote. And this is exactly what you are doing to him.
Just all of the missteps that the president had yesterday in Puerto Rico. First of all,
You're no better than Donald Trump.
At the victims of the hurricane like it was a game. Never seen anything like that before.
Ever.
And then saying, boy, you're lucky you didn't face a real catastrophe.
You should be proud.
Yeah, when really, the, the stories coming out of Puerto Rico every day really keep getting worse.
Who could have known, when Brian released that song a year ago, that that would be the reality now? Who could have known that? Next Monday, we celebrate someone who has, was, is seen as a civil rights leader, Martin Luther King Jr. A quote from him, "There comes a time when silence becomes betrayal." We are in that time right now with all four of you sitting up there, the three of you sitting over there, and the two of you, chief and assistant chief, sitting back there. I am tired. I am exhausted. And I'm white. I am exhausted having to raise my 14-year-old son in a city that I grew up in. You all know me. You all know that not only do I live in Richfield now, I was born and raised here. And I don't feel safe. Last weekend, I was leaving Ashley's house, as a matter of fact, and I stopped in at the S.A. on 66th. I had Damon with me, and I had his friend Owen with me. And we'll talk about Damon and Owen in a little bit as well. And we ran into Dylan Schultz in that gas station. Do you know what a flight-or-fight response is? I know you're not supposed to talk to me, but what is it, Ben? It's a panic response. And that's the response that I had. Because I'm sure he knows who I am. And I have my black child with me and another child with me that's been victimized by one of the officers here in Richfield, in Richfield Public Schools. All we could do was get the hell out of there as fast as we possibly could. You guys were not silent when it came to Nate Kinsey in 2015. He was fired. You guys took it all the way to the Supreme Court. You did the right thing. So why, when officers murder someone, are they back on the street within weeks? Why? Why? Because I can assure you that smacking someone upside the head while wrong is not the same as murdering someone. Why the fuck are these officers back on the streets? Your officers have continued to brutalize people. Ayesha Graves, an attorney visiting from out of town, gets pulled over, and the officer says, Officer Anderson, says it's a high-drug area. Bullshit. He pulled her over because she was black. Let's call a spade a spade. He called her, pulled her over because she's black. Same fucking reason that Brian was pulled over. Officer Holtzer at the Richfield Middle School, the SRO. You all have heard from me, but I'm going to put it on public record. The very first day that my friend's son and my son's best friend attends Richfield Middle School, not even in his first class, he had not been to his first class! He has a large birthmark on the side of his face. Before he gets to his first class, a gun-toting adult walks up to him and asks him if he's been been attacked by a tattoo machine, and then reaches out to try and touch him. No, I'm dead serious. I am dead serious. And you all supposedly interviewed him and counseled him. It ain't enough. Thank God. The admin at Richfield Middle School got that officer out of there so he can't brutalize any more of the brown kids in that school or the white kids, because Owen's white. Thank God. But you have a fucking problem with your officers. All of them. I have demands. I want these officers, the three that murdered Brian, off the street immediately. I don't want to have to worry about running into them at a fucking gas station at midnight. If you can't fire them, at least get them off the street. Put them on some sort of desk duty. I don't give a shit what they do. They can do some underwater basket weaving at home for all I care. Get them off the streets. We don't feel safe. I don't feel safe. And I know I'm not alone. Get them off these streets. You have not completed the data requests that have been submitted. There is data missing. I have submitted data requests, and I'm looking at you, Katie. She's right there, on the far end. I have asked for, asked for data from you, from the chief, that has not, that I have not received. Now, I know I owe you an email to come in and review things. I purposely left things out to see if I would catch you, and guess what I did? Because there are other things that are missing. Other things that the chief has in his inbox that he's just sitting on, just like he always does. I will set up a time with you to come in and review the data that is available. But you're missing shit, and that's all I'm going to say about it because you better figure it out. I demand that you guys modify the use-of-force policy. One of the things that I have been doing with Ashley and Samaya and other family members is attending the police and, what is it called? Use of deadly force by, with police state work groups. At the first one we attended, we heard from the Camden County Police Department, Camden County, New Jersey. I have their 18-page use-of-force policy right here. I have a copy for you, Mayor Gonzalez, and I have a copy for you, City Manager Rodriguez, that I will be dropping off with you, and I expect action will be taken on the use-of-force policy. The core principles, there are six of them in the use-of-force policy, are that officers may use force only to accomplish specific law enforcement objectives. Whenever feasible, sorry, core principle number two. Whenever feasible, officers should attempt to de-escalate confrontations with the goal of resolving encounters without force. That sure as hell didn't happen with Brian. Officers may only use force that is objectively reasonable, necessary, and as a last resort. Not first, which is what happened with Brian. Let's be crystal clear. You guys may not have seen the videos yet. I haven't seen the videos. But I've heard eyewitness accounts. I've heard from others. We know what this is going to show. Yep, 14 seconds. Core principle number three. Officers must use only the amount of force that is proportionate to the circumstances. You can't tell me that a man who is recovering from a broken ankle and didn't have a firearm, and that was obvious that he was recovering from a broken ankle, and didn't have a firearm, was a threat to those officers. Core principle number four. Deadly force is only authorized as a last resort and only in strict accordance with this directive. Core principle number five. Officers must promptly provide or request medical aid. Oh, no. That's not what happened with Brian. Brian was left to die in the street. No one tried. Lies. And as the elected officials who oversee those cops, you all are responsible. You have blood on your hands. You have blood on your hands. Core principle number six. Employees, not just officers, employees have a duty to stop and report uses of force that violate any applicable law or this directive. Camden County has seen a drastic drop. I think they've had, what was it, one deadly encounter. And Camden County is not a good neighborhood, not a good city, lots of crime. They have had one deadly encounter since they started modifying the training. That's before they even implemented this policy. Councilmember Waylon, when you canceled the meeting at the advice of who knows who in the city that you had with me, which is bullshit by the way. I live in your ward. That's a violation of my First Amendment rights. We'll handle that in another way. You told me that body cameras will be implemented on a trial basis beginning in 2021. With full implementation in 2023 and 2024. That is unacceptable. Body cameras are known. The research shows that cops don't like them, but I don't give a fuck about what the cops like. It is known to reduce uses of force. And you have a problem with your cops. There's what, 45 cops in the city of Richfield roughly? Give or take a little bit? Let's hope so. I have listed five, five, six, five or six officers just tonight that have had problematic encounters with residents and visitors to the city since Brian was murdered. And those are the ones I know about. I'm sure there are more. If you guys don't do something, I can assure you, none of you will be sitting up there after the next election. None of you will be sitting at any other chair where you have a position of power over the people. I will get my boots on the ground to get all of you out of your seats. Yep, every last one of you. As someone who grew up in Richfield and was proud to be from Richfield, your behavior is embarrassing. It's shameful. You all should be ashamed. So what are you going to do about it? Are you going to finally do something and do the right thing?
Thank you very much. Seeing as there are no other comments for the open forum, I will move to hats off to hometown hits.
My name is Ada Henry. I am a resident of Minneapolis, not Richfield. I am be here on behalf of Brian Quinones, Isaac Aiden, and my brother Dante Lowright, who was killed in 2012 by Brooklyn Center Police Department. So these issues have, of course, everybody knows, been very evident in our communities, have been a problem for some time. And now they're getting out of, like, not that it was ever okay then, but now it's getting out of hand. Now it's blatantly just insane what a family has to go through who is supposed to be grieving. And I know you've seen our faces before. I came up to speak. It takes a lot of courage, so that's why I didn't fill out a form. But I hope you hear your community's cry for your help, your transparency, and change. It's very hostile because that's what we feel every day. Like Ms. Rose, you know, Brian's sister, I'm sorry, Wilma. Like Wilma said, imagine if you were in our shoes for even just one day. Imagine if you didn't have your, your son or your brother or your husband to go home to because of, who cares what happened? You know, because you can't trust your son or your cousin or your brother to leave out of the door that day knowing, not knowing who's on the streets, if their protocol is going to be followed. If, you know, if, if we have to follow the rules, so do you. And that's where this is coming from. But that's why we're here. It's deeper. Unfortunately, what has happened to us has happened to us. Now it's our futures. Now it's our kids. And I think that's where my fear comes from is, yes, I'm forced to deal with the trauma now. But how do we stop it from happening further? What do we implement and change in your police department, in your city council board? How do we get you to hear us? And that's coming from a genuine spot, you know. It sucks coming up here and being angry with you and, and, and feeling like we're not heard. I watched your chief roll his eyes 16 times while people are speaking. That's terribly infuriating. And disrespectful. So again, I just wanted to wrap up with, please hear, our anger comes from hurt. And I hope you can just really process that. We are extremely hurt as a community, as homes, as, as individuals. We are hurt by actions that everyone has a hand in. And then you add salt to the wound with not answering our questions, not helping us along the way. Like Wilma said, not keeping us aware, taking away our rights. How, how do you expect this to feel? How do you expect us to become and be open with you and come and speak to you and not be angry? So thank you for allowing me to speak without a card, but.
Thank you. The next person I would like to ask up is Sumaya Aiden.
My name is Deanie Aiden. I'm the brother of Isaac Aiden, who was also killed by police July 2nd. And I originally wasn't going to say anything today because we've already expressed our anger. We've already told you guys everything that we've been experiencing and going through. But sitting back and listening to the opening part of the meeting and realizing the city of Richfield just spent $2.8 million to renovate a new ice rink. That, that just, that just pisses me off. I can't find a different word to say, but that just pisses me off. The city of Eagan estimated to fully equip their, the police department with 70, 75 officers to get body cameras would cost $75,000. And Eagan, I mean, and Richfield only has 44 or 45 officers. So with that 2.8 million we just spent on renovating a new ice rink, not even building a new ice rink, renovating a new ice rink, that would have been more than enough to equip the city of Richfield with body cameras and have enough money for data because Eagan, again, estimated for data storage, it would be $32,000 a year. So it would be an upfront cost of $75,000 one time for 75 officers and $32,000 yearly. The amount we just spent on the new ice rink would be more than enough to equip the city of Richfield with body cameras for like the next 30 years. So all of a sudden, anytime we bring up the topic of body cameras, you guys want to implement it two to three years from now, five years from now? Why? It costs literally $45,000 to equip the city of Richfield with body cameras. And that's not a topic? When is the next time you guys are actually going to go over training budgets and different stuff for the police department? I don't see that as a topic, but we're more worried about ice rinks. So there's, I clearly don't see qualified people because any person with common sense would think to get body cameras before a new ice rink. And you guys would have still had leftover in the budget to get a new ice rink the following year. But we want to keep pushing off the body cameras two, three years from now just to renovate a new ice rink. So I just wanted to come out and say that because that's extremely frustrating just hearing out the plans. Why can't we do it next month? Why can't we do it this year? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aiden. Is there anybody else here for the open forum?
Hi, my name is Samaya Aiden. I am the sister and survivor of Isaac Aiden, who was murdered by Eagan and Bloomington officers in Eagan, Minnesota on July 2nd. I sat here earlier and listened to you guys vote on a few things. And one of the reasons you guys voted for one of the agendas was because you said, you, you mayor, you said you wanted to attract people even from across the country to the city of Richfield to enjoy the ice rink. Well, I came here all the way from Los Angeles, California. And I'm here in Richfield and it's not for the right reason. I'm here to protest the city council. I'm here to protest your police department. And I'm here to protest how you guys are handling this situation. You have a murdered, your city, your police officer murdered someone. You guys don't care. We've been here how many times now? We keep saying the same things. You're denying us our basic human rights. This past week, not to mention since July, it's been hell. But this past week, it's been even worse. I know you guys have seen the news. I know you guys have heard about what happened to Officer Matson. For those of you who don't know, a white man shot a police officer in the head and made it to jail. And somehow got arrested here in the state of Minnesota. And not only that, it was played on the news at 5 o'clock, 5 o'clock news, 6 o'clock news, 9:30, 10. And the difference in the way that it was reported. When it was the officer that was shot, they talked about how he was a volunteer firefighter, what he did for the community and everything. And then the suspect, the person who shot the officer, they had all of his criminal record posted. They talked about all of his criminal records, how there was a warrant out for him. He was a fugitive, all of this. When a cop kills someone, why isn't it treated the same way? Why aren't their disciplinary actions or their disciplinary files talked about? Why aren't the things that they did bad posted? And on top of that, you guys won't post it on the news. You guys won't provide it to the media. The media obviously will not bite the hand that feeds them and share that information. We come here and exercise our right to demand the data requests. We've put in forms and everything. It's been months now that you've ignored this family. We've had to go through hell to get this. Why aren't you guys granting them their basic human rights after your city was responsible for murdering their husband, their brother, their, their son, their grandson? His father? I know you guys are just looking at me, but we shouldn't have to go through this. You've heard us say this multiple times now, multiple times. Multiple times, and you guys haven't done a single thing. You guys haven't done a single thing. Not one of you guys can stand here and say that you've done something. You ran on a progressive platform, I heard. You knew Brian Quinones. You, you sat here and ignored his 12-year-old son pleading for you to say something. Edwina, you kept hitting the gavel and requesting a 15-minute break. A citizen from Richfield was on the ground crying when they found out what happened to Brian. And that's still not a priority for you guys. You should be ashamed of yourselves. And this isn't the last time you're going to see us. We're here tonight to demand a time and day for when that data request will be answered and will be provided to this family.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'd second.
All in favor? Aye, the meeting is adjourned.